We experience the peace of God. Thank you because we know you are ready with us. We bless you tonight and we worship you. For you alone are worthy to be praised. In Jesus mighty name, I have prayed. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you ver- thank you very much, uh, ca- uh, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Alfred.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson. Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
It's thirteen present and one absent.
Thank you very much. I would like to welcome Dr. Cash, Director of Schools, Chamber of Commerce, Director Mike Griffith, and Keisha Parks, Director of the Library, and the members of the public that are here. Thank all of you for being with us. The approval of the minutes, entertain a motion. Commissioner Goins, second, please.
Second.
Second on Commissioner Hughes. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you very much, uh, we'll now go to the report from the county mayor, Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. First, I've got to mention the Swafford family. I know everyone is aware by now, the passing of Dinah's husband, David. When I got word that he'd been taken to the hospital this morning, I went by the ER to see if Dinah needed anything and was actually there when the doctor came in and informed her of his passing. Needless to say, it was a huge shock. As far as I know, he hadn't been sick or anything, but he did pass, and our prayers go out to that family. Please keep them in our prayers. Um, we had a successful block party the other night. A lot of people were there, as always. I think several of you were there. Pretty sure I saw a few of you. I saw, looked like Commissioner Beatty dressed like a farmer. Commissioner Blake looked like he was dressed like the county trustee. And there was a doughnut walking around. I think that was Commissioner Gilbert. But sure enough, a lot of people had a lot of fun. I think it went well. The weather was great. You know, that all started as... What are you laughing about, Commissioner Alfred?
I would tell you a good story, but you don't take the time.
About Commissioner Blake, I hope. Anyway, that all started as a way of providing safe fun for kids and turned out to be mostly adults, I guess, too, but uh, anyway, many years later, it's still going on and it went well. It leaves downtown kinda in a mess, but by the time you get here the next morning, it usually looks pretty good, so we're fortunate. I just passed out a, um, reappointment list and I'll be honest with you, I didn't talk to these three people, but I'm gonna assume they're okay to be reappointed. I'm asking you all to confirm the reappointment of Mike Hughes, Howard Thompson, and Tim Mason to the Solid Waste Landfill Committee. Could so do so.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Winters, second by, who's Commissioner Alfred? Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes. Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, appreciate that. And, uh, I'm often asked by Commissioner Alfred about, uh, the latest on the ARP plan. Uh, what you have in front of you here now is the latest on the ARP plan, and I mean latest hot off the press. Finance changed something on me again today. So we've got that change made on here. We've, uh, even though you haven't voted to do it yet, I'm assuming you will. So I've moved the pub- the amount of money from public water to affordable housing, so that is now in the plan. Um, the only changes on this first page from what you've seen before is that we have added the last item in the COVID response bucket. And that will be addressed later tonight also. On the second sheet is the one that we're really working from now. That first sheet is all committed, and when you total all of that up, it equals the twenty...
We don't have that.
Where's it stuck? It's on its way around. Who's, who's got the ARP plan? I know these two have it, was there only two?
Yes. Oh, we got...
Okay.
Hung up at Louie.
Sorry about that. Hey, Commissioner Ledford, I said give it to the one beside you and it'll go around. That don't always work. All right, I'll wait a second until it gets around. Sorry.
On your side of the table.
We'll kinda start over, and I'll do it hurriedly, but I'll answer questions if you have any. The first sheet is basically all updates to the numbers as we know them today, you know? We will round things and put, I'll give an example, eight hundred thousand in an, on an item, and then when it's actually done, it might be seven hundred ninety-nine thousand. So we've updated those numbers the best we know them today. Uh, of course, bucket one is finished. Bucket two is just about finished. No report tonight on sewer, but we are down to the last two or three. Uh, broadband's not changed a bit. Public water, we did take, in this plan, we did take some money out that you'll be approving later and moved it to the affordable housing bucket. And then there's been the, excuse me, the last item in the middle bucket has been added, uh, which will be addressed later tonight. And again, all six of those buckets totaled together equals the twenty million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred dollars that was received from the federal government. Uh, I must say, as I've said often, the best thing federal government ever did, as far as we're concerned, but at the same time, it's what really kicked off all the inflation that we have going on, the trillions of dollars they approved across this country, is why we have such inflation. So a lot of this money didn't help a lot because things started costing twice as much. Fire trucks cost seven hundred thousand instead of the original four hundred thousand, for example. Ambulances are two something, or they were one something. Uh, but we have put all of that money to good use. The second sheet is money that's, we're, we're tracking the interest. I created another bucket for interest. The interest we've made off of the twenty-one million dollars over the last two or three years stays in the ARP fund, and we can spend it as we so please, as you so please. This bucket shows how it's been approved to be spent so far, and what's left at the bottom is, is yet to be spent. And then if we're slow about actually spending this bucket, it will bring in a decent amount of interest for next year. So we'll have, we'll be continuing this bucket into next year, hopefully. Uh, we do have a commitment deadline of this year on the twenty-one million. The front page, it's all committed, so we meet that deadline. The second page, the interest bucket, is not part of that deadline because it's interest that we can spend as we so choose, so we don't, we don't have any of the ARP rules on it as far as deadlines and so forth. I'll stop there. Do you have any questions about any of it?
Commissioner, please.
Yeah, real quick, Mayor, some of these, uh, projects or, or purchases have been completed, like you said, and some of them haven't. What are you using to designate the date between, to like the...
Well, if...
I told the sheriff when he was here at finance, that fence is one hundred percent done, and it came in under. So that would be a mark of completed.
True. Right, and some of those things don't reflect in here, but if you, you could go to your budget and you could see, uh, for example, that line you're referring to would have had, uh, I don't, uh, it would have had the seventy-seven thousand in the budget, but it would probably have, uh, what's that term when you PO it? Anyway, uh, anyway, it's been POed, so it would show the seventy-six or whatever there. And that's where I go pick up that number and change it. Not all of those have I changed. Uh, the fence wasn't finished when I was updating those kinds of numbers, and it's since been finished, but there's still some, there's still some, uh, it's, nothing is hard, you know, on, on a lot of these. About fifty percent of them in that middle bucket are, are completely finished, and those numbers have been changed, but the bottom half are the newer ones, and there's still gonna be minor changes to them. They actually reflect in the budget, but without changing that one, for example, say it's seventy-six instead of seventy-seven, this is the plan that we use to report from when we do our ARP report. We have to show them the plan of how we're spending it, knowing that those numbers will be fine tuned as we go along. So the fact that they're not all to the penny at this point is okay, because this is the plan. And before I forget it, the last time you really didn't approve the plan, if you don't, if you have a problem with approving it, okay, but it's got to at least be in the minutes, so we can refer to it as the official updated plan. Uh, does that kinda answer your question? There are some of those, uh, the cannery, for example, uh, they've PO'd the boiler. We know what the boiler is gonna cost, but there'll be some other expenses yet to come out of that one, but it won't be exactly thirty thousand three forty-nine. It, that, that's one of them that will be subject to change. I hope that makes sense. I don't wanna ramble too much on it, but... Other questions, uh, over there?
Yes.
Mayor, is there an update on the community services shelter?
Nothing has changed in the plan. You remember last month, was it, that I came to you and explained to you what the city's proposing? They didn't approve those latest, uh, bids. They've said, rather than spend all this money on, on an old building that's only gonna net us a few beds, let's back up and, the city's convinced, flashing light out there. The city's convinced that there's about three grants that they can apply for and get, and they ask us to leave our money in the plan for ARP to use as match on some of those grants. So that's, that's sorta like the broadband. It's just still there waiting for those grants. And it's committed, so it meets the deadline requirement. The grants won't be announced till sometime next year, and then at that point, we'll know for sure what we're spending on that particular purpose. But you'll find it in here in two different places. It's in affordable housing, the hundred, and then the other hundred and fifty, I think, is in the interest bucket.
Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, is there any update on the money coming from the state, from TDEC and from the money that went directly to the state that's supposed to be distributed out?
That's the second page, that, what he's referring to is that TDEC bucket, utilities grant. Is that what you're talking about?
Is there any idea of when that's coming?
Those numbers, I'm not changing them. That's the amounts that were approved. That's the eight million six hundred fifty thousand dollar grant that Bradley County got that does not come to Bradley County, but they have started paying finally. They've sat there for two years, waiting on the state to get their act together. Um, High Loss Utilities is really drawing down a lot on theirs, but they've had to spend it and wait and wait and wait. But the checks, our only involvement in that is when the bills are paid, they submit them to the state, and when the state pays it, they will automatic transfer it to our account. And when it hits our books, then we write a check to High Loss Utilities. So it's just, it's one hundred percent flow-through is all it is, and so the only time I know is when those checks are coming through.
But it has started to flow.
It has started. I think every one of them's paid a little bit. And now that's the state grant. That has nothing to do with our ARP. It's just another grant that we got along about the same time that's going to the utilities.
Mayor, you mentioned that the commission needed to vote and approve something a minute ago?
I would hope that you would vote to approve the updated plan, unless you have a problem with that. And that way, it gets in the minutes, and it can be referred to as the updated plan of the county commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Who, who's, Commissioner Hughes, who's the second? Commissioner Slater? Open for discussion, please.
Yeah, you're, you're updating the plan. It has two items in it that you're gonna approve later tonight. Uh, but I'm superstitious. You guys are gonna approve them. What they're gonna be telling you in a few minutes is a certain amount of money is moved from public water to affordable housing, and that's because I think the commission had already voted to kill that water project. So now you're proposing to move it, and then you're also gonna approve later on, um, an amendment to your budget uh, for the EMS equipment for the next new ambulance. Those two things, you've not approved until later tonight, but they're already in the plan. I think it's safe to go ahead and approve the plan, because plans subject change. Anyway, we update it all the time.
Is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for approval. Commissioner Slater, second. Uh, Commissioner Mason. Open for discussion? There be no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move to reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our right with Commissioner Beatty, please.
I have nothing to report, First District.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, tonight, I'd like to send my condolences to Dinah Swafford and her family. Um, David was a super good guy. He's the one that I was proud to be able to call a friend and family. Um, he'll sorely be missed at the McDonald Rude Town Club and definitely by me.
Thank you. Commissioner Alfred, please.
Yes, uh, Second District's doing well, thank you.
Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll go, Commissioner Hughes is David, uh, uh, was a very good guy, a very nice guy. Meet him down on, on, the first Saturday of every month down at the McDonald Rude Town Club. You see him back there in the back, frying up bacon for everybody. Uh, then obviously about this time of year, you get ready to put the, uh, ad in the calendar, so my condolences to Swafford family. Also, Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Chairman, allow me to remind all eligible organizations that HCI grant cycle is now open. The workshop scheduled for November the sixth at four thirty will be here in the commission room. Letters of intent are due to the commission by au- by office, by December thirteenth. To get your letter of intent or to obtain information, please contact the county commission office. Lori Maltrey. Also, Mr. Chairman, the finance committee met earlier today and voted a number of recommendations to the full commission. First, the commission, I'm sorry, the committee voted to recommend funding the Moore Circle Road Northwest Water Project with the remaining public water funds, which is approximately two thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. This will close out the public water funds until the next budget year. Mr. Chairman, I place this in the form of motion. Thank you.
Have a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Hughes, on the second, open for discussion? There be no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee also voted to approve a timeline for the awarding opioid abatement funds to eligible organizations. You have a hard copy of the timeline recommended by the committee. Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the finance committee's recommendation to approve the opioid abatement fund timeline as presented. Thank you.
Have a second, please? Commissioner Goins on the second, open for discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, finance committee voted to recommend approving a budget amendment moving no hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the ARP fund balance to the ARP expense fund to purchase new equipment for EMS. You have a hard copy of the amendment before you, Mr. Chairman. I place this, uh, recommendation in the form of motion. Thank you.
Second. Commissioner Rogers on the second, open for discussion? Be no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was one that the mayor was referring to, uh, the ARP, um, um, funding. Lastly, we voted to allocate a hundred fifty-four thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars of the ARP fund previously earmarked for the Bank of Rhode project, whose city feels to purchase more homes. We can confidently say that all of our ARP purchases to date have benefited the community. Not only will this project benefit our community, but it is an investment that we recoup over time as houses are renovated, sold, and assessed at a higher value. Mr. Chairman, I place this in the form of motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Winters on the second, open for discussion? Be no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
It's thirteen in favor and unopposed and one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, last but not least, I'm sure everybody's fully aware, hopefully, that tomorrow is election day. Just a little FYI, polls are open at eight sharp, and they close at eight PM. If you're standing in line, and the line's two or three hundred people, as long as you're in line at eight PM, the officer election will, uh, let you vote. Uh, but you do have to vote at your precinct. Yeah, and like early voting, we got to go to the, uh, annex and stuff like that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, as I think all of us, uh, exercise our right to vote. I was able to vote, uh, here at the courthouse. Uh, it was, uh, full. Everybody was, everybody showed up at the time I showed up. Then I went to, uh, couldn't get in there, went to Perry, Perry Stone's place. It was full. I waited just a few minutes, and then my wife and I came back here, and it was fine. I'd like to compliment the election commission. I think, uh, from where I stood, they were doing all they could do with a mass of people coming through at the same time, and they were being very cordial and very professional. And the two, two sections that I went to, uh, were, which I'm, I'm so proud of, uh, fellow citizens here that voted and are gonna vote tomorrow. I think it speaks very highly of, of our community. Uh, I was also able to participate, uh, to the Prospect School Elementary School showcase. Uh, I know many of you attended showcases that have been presented by the county schools. It was heaven on earth in a school. It was beautiful, the way the kids welcomed us as we came in and saluted us on the way out. And, uh, one, one young lady went to every door that we went through and opened them for us before we got there. Uh, as we toured, uh, Steve Montgomery's the principal there. The teachers there were exceptional. Uh, the kids were on point with everything. They, they modeled classes for us. It wasn't fake. It was what's going on there, and I saw kids doing high-level chemistry work, uh, as, uh, fifth graders. Uh, I saw them planting seed. Two little girls came up to me and want me to help them plant a bulb in the ground. We did, and, uh, they were really, and this is gonna, this is, it was a beautiful place. This is only one school. Many of you went to the other schools. Uh, compliments to what we have here in Bradley County with our system. Uh, I've gotta give kudos to the city system as well. I think they're doing a great job. Some of them are, uh, the, one of the principals was a student teacher for me, and I hired. And now he's, uh, leading one of our fine schools. Uh, so that, that for me was, uh, a, uh, exceptional time, and I, I commend the county schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. I, uh, I listened to two young, I guess, fifth graders, could've been fourth graders, that spoke, uh, frequently, and they articulated their vocabulary to the maximum. I was really impressed. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
As the mayor and others, my condolences to Dinah, her family. Uh, I have nothing else.
Commissioner Goins, please.
Fifth District's doing well, but I'd say I like to, my prayers with Dinah Swafford and her family. I, uh, David was a good friend, great, great guy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Mason?
I guess I've got it all tonight. I'd like to say my condolences also to Dinah Swafford, her family. Um, David was, will be sorely missed. He meant a lot to the community. Did, did a lot for the community. Uh, Saturday, we had our Household Housers Waste Day. I wanna report on that and, uh, give some numbers and some thank yous to everyone that participated. Uh, numbers were two hundred and twenty-five total residents that showed up, a hundred and sixteen county residents, and eighty-one city residents. Sixteen volunteers. I wanna thank Mayor Davis for, uh, always being supportive of, of this event. Um, special thanks to Chris Broome with City Stormwater and his, all his guys, and he brought breakfast out, and they worked hard and did, did a great job. Sarah Jensen with the County Stormwater and her staff, Alan Mitsey with KB and the staff, David Hollenshed of Republic Landfield, uh, David sent in eight hundred dollars worth of Chick-fil-A and fed the whole entire staff that day, and he also provided a roll-off dumpster. Lisa Mantooth, uh, with Vokker and all of her volunteers, Malin, Malin Blake from the Third District. Thanks for coming out, Malin. Uh, also, Thomas Bell and our inmates did a fabulous job, as always. This was my twentieth event that I've been in, involved with Household Housers Waste Day. It seems like it keeps on getting better, and, uh, Sheriff Steve Lawson was there also, and thank him for letting us, uh, use the, the Justice Center. Had nine in environmental court, uh, on Friday. A big thank you to Crystal Farberg, county attorney. She always does a fabulous job in, in court, and, uh, we're just, I'm just trying to keep these people cleaned up and making Bradley County look better. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Passing around, please. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the insurance committee met last week and voted unanimously to recommend confirming the mayor's recommendation to exercise the optional one-year renewal with Cigna for employee health coverage. The mayor successfully negotiated Cigna to a one percent increase proposal for coverage to continue in 2025 without any tweaks. One percent is incredible. Thank you, Mayor, for your efforts. Mr. Chairman, each one of you have a copy, or it's coming around, of the resolution authorizing the Bradley County mayor to continue coverage with Cigna Health and Life Insurance Company to provide health insurance benefits for Bradley County employees, offering four options to employees at a county cost not to exceed seven hundred and forty-one dollars sixteen cents per month for each employee enrolled for individual coverage. I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Who's the second?
Second.
Commissioner? Commissioner Goins on the second, open for discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.[1681.64]
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, I would do wanted to send out condolences to Dinah Swafford. I'm also in the Lieutenant Club at Valley View and we work close with David and we've helped calendars for fundraisers for those guys. So I know that's going to be a great loss for that area down there in McDonald. And also remember, let's vote. We got thirty-seven thousand in. I'd love to see, I know we got eighty thousand four, eighty thousand four registered voters. I'd like to see that in the fifties and sixties. So go vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Our family is sending our thoughts and prayers to Dinah and her family that go through this time. And just thinking about them and praying for them. Also want to encourage everyone to go vote as well tomorrow. Other than that, Ms. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you. There being no unfinished business to my knowledge, we'll move along to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion. Second, and Commissioner, who was it? Commissioner Mason on, and then second was Goins, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yeah.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one answer.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Legal Legislative Committee's recommendation to amend the HCI general procedures to permit eligible organizations that have been established for a minimum of ten years to apply for and receive hospital funds from both Bradley County HCI and the United Way HCI in the same fiscal year. Place this in form of a motion.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Blake on the second, open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers? Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yeah.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one answer.
Agenda item B, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to move a motion to approve the Legislative Legal Committee recommendations to amend the public water fund policy to state the following. Extensions shall be six-inch diameter lines unless the utility provider determines that a small diameter is appropriate based on the current and future needs of the area. Place this in form of a motion.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Slater, second. Open for discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes? Alford?
Yeah.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake? Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one answer.
Agenda item C, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to present a motion to approve the Legal and Legislative Committee recommendation to amend the public water fund policy to require proof of well contamination or applications that claim such issue. I place this in form of a motion.
Do I have a second, please? Second on Goins, open for discussion.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
A quick question. I've been looking over the, the public fund pos, or water, public water fund policy. And out of all of it, I've noticed that there's really only one requirement that's up for the African, and that's to pay fifty percent of the funds and have that present. I was under the impression that that public water fund was to get public water to people. And I would love to know how many people have actually claimed, or actually claimed to have a contaminated well. And since this is going to be a new requirement, I remember there's been several people claiming they have dry wells. Are we going to have them start checking these dry wells too, to make sure they're dry? Or are we just going to make sure they have the public fund? It just seems like another rule that all we're trying to do is push public water. So it's limiting access is all this is. It'd be easier if somebody's going to claim that, just say, hey, take it off.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you.
No.
I just had a question. By what, the required proof of the well contamination, what is the standard of that? What standards are we using to be able to determine if the well is contaminated or not? And what kind of, you know, are we going to provide specific people in the community? Are we going to have verified, you know, people who go and look at these wells that we trust and we know? I mean, I, I think we're asking provide proof. I'm just wondering what those standards of proof are. If Legal and Legislative Committee could let me know.
My memory serves me right, Mr. Rogers, there is people available. I, I remember when my well, when I first moved in, they, when I got a house loan, they required me to get a test on the well. And I don't remember right off the bat, maybe it might be the same people do the sewer. But they, they come in, they'll tell you exactly what's wrong with your well and whether you need to add this well now. Can you, if you add chlorine or something, they, they, they wouldn't lighten you on what you need to do to correct the problem.
I, I understand that, Commissioner Alfred. I just, I don't, all I have on the document that we've provided today is just this motion. And so I'm just curious of where are the rules, the procedures? What does that look like? What do we have to say? Like where will this be going? Because we're making a motion and voting on to provide this proof, but there's no breakdown of what it is. And I didn't know if the county attorney could let us know what, what it is, since it's legal legislative or?
Yes, Commissioner Rogers. So if you look at page four, that's the water fund policy and the recommendation from the committee was just as you see in number nine. So there was not any discussion about what was required. So I would assume that would mean any proof would qualify if we pass the policy as it's written.
So?
Any proof of contamination.
Any proof that, so if I just come and say that it's contaminated, is that legal proof enough for the committee? I mean, as it's written?
It's, it's meant that a reputable evaluation would be done for the property, for the water that's, that's being asked for funds for it. So they would have to provide a written statement from a professional group that says it's contaminated or not contaminated. So that would be up to the individual to submit that to.
I'm guessing as it's written, as it's written in here, it just says must provide proof of contamination.
And that's right.
Yes, there's not any specificity in the policy. So if there was any question, it would have to come back to you all to review.
We'd rather get it right the first time.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
Ms. Chairman, I go back to my original question. In the past ten years, how many have we had that's filed that they were compliant or contaminated? I can remember only one, but if there's been more than that, I'd love to know the number. I would have hoped that would have been here tonight.
I, I think basically.
But please, I do go back to the original statement also was that the public water fund was actually meant to push public water. It wasn't saying we're going to disbar you because you said your water, your well could be contaminated or it's dry. It's to help push water. Public Water Fund.
I, I think basi, basically this committee was just basically putting basic line procedure together that if you're going to ask for the funds, that you, you have to prove in some way that your water's contaminated. We're not trying to keep people from doing that. If they obviously are drinking their water and happy with it, then they're going to ask, they're, they're not going to eat this. You're, so I think we were just basically setting a baseline on this.
Mr. Winters, I, I understand that. I'm just bringing up the point after reading over it afterwards. I actually, during the committee, did vote in favor of this, but then as I read more into it, it, I got basically to the same thing that Commissioner Rogers is coming up. There's not really a guideline on here for anything else. That's the only guide thing, the guidelines. If you contain, say your water's contaminated, then you have to prove it. You're not have to prove it's dry. You don't have to prove any other issue, just if it's contaminated.
Any other discussion?
Is it, is there anywhere in there that says if your water dries up?
No. You don't have to prove it's dry.
I'd rather have contaminated water as dry water. At least you could filter it. Or try to filter.
Well, my point is, is that you could make any, there's nothing in there that's, because that has been used in the past as my wells dried up, but they've never required a requirement that says now you have to prove it. Bring me some mud. That's my point. I thought it was for public water. We're trying to get public water to the people.
Any other discussion? We have a first and a second. Discussion is closed. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
No.
Ledford?
No.
Rogers?
No.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
No.
Hughes?
No.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? That's seven in favor, six opposed, and one absent.
Six, eight, ten. Move to, let's see, we, that was C, wasn't it, or?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go to D. Commissioner, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is just an ad man thing. Motion to, I'm sorry, yeah, motion approve the Legal Legislative Committee recommendation to dissolve all ad hoc committees that have not met in the last twelve months. Put that in form of a motion. Thank you.
Second on from Goins, open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yeah.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake? Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed in one answer.
Thank you. Agenda item A, Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The motion to approve the Legal, Legal and Legislative Committee recommendation to amend the Bradley County Rules and Procedures to restrict the commission's ability to draft letters solely to matters directly related to county business and require all letters to pertain to functions, services, or issues directly associated with the responsibilities and operations of county government. And to include a provision that allows questions regarding the authority to act shall be referred to the chairperson and the county attorney, subject to an appeal to the county commission at its next regular meeting. Place this in the form of a motion, Ms. Chairman.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Alfred on the second, open for discussion.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Where in the Bradley County Commission Rules and Procedures would this go under? And do we have updated Bradley County rules and rules of procedures that are revised that we would be voting on and having? What rule number would this go?
Changing.
Does you want me to answer that?
Please.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, we, it would be a completely new section that we would add. We chose not to, the, the rules of procedures are very long and lengthy. And so since this was a completely new addition, unless it was approved, we were not going to go ahead and do that amendment. So if you all approve this tonight, it would be a new section that will be added. And we certainly can get you all a revised version if it's approved.
And then will we have to approve the new update?
No, but you would get a copy of it and that would be the, the new version. The, the only time we give you a complete new version is, we, we had some internal discussions about it and decided it to do this way. Because if it doesn't pass, then we will have created some confusion in the minutes with putting a new draft that doesn't get approved.
Anyone else? No further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
No.
Ledford?
No.
Rogers?
No.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
No.
Hughes?
No.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
No.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
Goins?
No.
Slater?
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? So that's five in favor, eight opposed, and one absent.
Thank you. Agenda item F, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The HCI committee asked the commission for some priority or some guidance. One of the things that's come to our attention is the devices for EMS, the Lucas devices. So we have to vote on this to quote unquote, make it, we speak as, as a commi, our commission with voting. So I'll put this in the form of a motion. The motion is one hundred and twenty-five thousand HCI funding for Lucas, Lucas lifesaving devices for EMS. Put that in form of a motion. Thank you.
Second on Goins, from Commissioner Goins, open for discussion, please.
Chairman, Adam, do you have that device that you wanted to show? If you guys want to see it, Adam's been kind enough to have one of his people bring one. I think it's pretty neat. I saw it the other day. But, yeah, Adam, have it.
So this, it's two parts. This would slide under the person. Think about underneath their chest. And then. Sorry? All right. Yeah. So once it locks into place, it's just simply powering on the device?
Adam, bring it up here.
I'm sorry?
Bring it up here. So they can see. Sorry. I, I didn't think they could see.
How about laying down this trider?
Yeah. Don't want to do that.
Why are you falling here?
Oh, yeah.
On the patient's chest.
Wow.
So what this funding will provide are six additional devices like this to go on all remaining trucks and response vehicles. As well as a total of fourteen additional batteries. We only have one battery for this device right now. So if you have to take a twenty or thirty minute transport, we're in jeopardy of seeing that battery die. So this is a lifesaver in more ways than one. And it's a huge asset for, for our folks on the, on the trucks. This, it has, yes, this was actually, not this device, but we've used.
You gave some, you gave some stats the other, the other day on how many times it had been used, the ones that we have.
Yes, sir. I don't recall what that number was. I gave it last week, but today it's been used three times.
Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Hey, I'm totally a hundred percent for that. But I was just wondering, is there any money in the budget, in your budget, to get any of them now? Immediately?
Keep in mind, we got a grant to get some. And if they, they're asking for the HCI grant to finish out the ambulances. So if that gets approved in the near future on that timeline, then we would have one in every ambulance.
Cause I'm, I'm telling you, right there's something else.
We have eight on our eight frontline trucks. So if you think about it, we have eight on the trucks that we typically run. And then we also have one on our commander's quick response vehicle. Six would provide additional units for everything we have that could possibly respond to a call of this nature.
Now, if I could add, it saves lives, but it also saves employees. What's the average time, thirty minutes? It's, it's a long time to be doing that. And if you, I know of one not too long ago that all the way to the hospital, they were doing just that themselves physically. It would have been so much better to add one of these.
If it provides consistent compressions, and that's, that's an important.
Consistent.
To note, the depth and the consistency, which is difficult to do. Which is difficult to do when you're doing it by hand manually, especially when you start to get tired. Two of the biggest pluses for us besides saving backs from our workers, we've been able to put, keep a truck in service. Before we had these devices, we would send two ambulances on a CPR call along with a supervisor and fire. This allows us to keep one of those ambulances in service now, which is great, especially with our call volume. It also allows the folks that are on the truck, the paramedic, to, to focus on other things. There's medications that can be given. There's other lifesaving interventions that can be done if you're not focused on giving chest compressions. And so that's another huge asset for us as well.
Any other comments, Commissioner Ledford?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I was on the HCI committee for about thirteen, fourteen years. And of all the grants that I give over the years, I can't think of one any better than that device right there. I know we all talk about doing compressions. I worked in surgery for thirty years and I've done more compressions than I can ever even name to you. After, you, you talk about thirty minutes. After about five minutes of you folding your hands up, especially when you get old, ten minutes of, of good compressions like Adam's talking about is hard and it weighs heavy on you, especially when you get my age now. I could never do it. There's no way I could ever do five minutes of, of correct compressions. But anyway, I, I think those devices above anything I've ever voted for while on the HCI, those deserve this grant if, if nothing else. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And no further discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mason?
Absolutely, yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
be done if you're not focused on giving chest compressions. And so that's another huge asset for us as well.
Any other comments? Commissioner Ledford? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was on the HCI committee for about 13, 14 years and of all the grants that I give over the years, I can't think of one any better than that device right there. I know we all talk about doing compressions. I worked in surgery for 30 years and I've done more compressions than I can ever even name to you. After, you, you talk about 30 minutes. After about five minutes of you folding your hands up, especially when you get old, 10 minutes of, of good compressions like Adam's talking about is hard and it weighs heavy on you, especially when you get my age now, I could never do it. There's no way I could ever do five minutes of, of correct compressions. But anyway, I, I think those devices above, anything I've ever voted for while on the HCI, those deserve this grant if, if nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? Be no further discussion, call the roll, please.
Mason.
Absolutely, yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Thirteen in favor and none opposed and one absent.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have one other question for Adam. Is that thing adjustable for a really large person? It looks pretty confined there.
It, it adjusts ever so slightly. So that, that is, that is one of the drawbacks to the device. But I will say this, if you ever see one in action, it is not a gentle process.
I know that.
And so what's more important, your ribs or saving your life? So I won't say that we, we have been able to fit, we've been able to fit folks. We, we make it work. But if they are too large, it's just not physically possible.